Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. Tonight, we have two scout troops here who will be helping us open up our meeting. We have Troop 345 from Shields, led by Troop Leader David Howe, and we also have with us tonight Troop 366 of Peace Lutheran Church, with the Scout District Communication Mayor Badge Leader Mark Foppel. We have a young man, a young scout, who has agreed to lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Ethan, you can step to the podium and please lead us.
Pledge.
Do you have a prayer?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Lord, that everybody got here safely. Hope everyone gets home safely, and hope everybody gets this mayor badge. Amen.
All right.
Very good.
Pledge.
Very good.
Go ahead.
Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ethan. Please proceed, everybody. May Madam Clerk, a little call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Annie Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Member Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Melfi.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. And this is for the audience. Good evening, everyone. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Certainly, those of us up here, we have to pay special attention to that.
Thank you. For announcements, we have a proclamation tonight. It's designating October 6th through the 12th of 2019 as Fire Prevention Week.
And I would invite Fire Marshal Ralph Martin to the podium, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember John Millen.
Good evening, Fire Marshal.
Good evening.
City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas the City of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, according to the National Fire Protection Association, statistics show that four out of five fire deaths occur in the home. And whereas three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in home fires by 50 percent. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention. As a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Saginaw, and I urge all residents of this city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2019, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Saginaw Fire Department. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this seventh day of October in the year of our Lord 2019. Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Millen, Jamie Forbes, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Thanks for all your work.
Ralph, you must have a few words first.
Just a few. Good evening to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager, and the citizens of Saginaw. We, the Saginaw Fire Department, really look forward to this Fire Prevention Week. We look forward to our award ceremony tomorrow at 801 Federal for our -- where we recognize citizens and firefighters and some of the companies that are helpers throughout the year. We really would like to see each and every one of your faces there tomorrow to help us celebrate and help us recognize those individuals and companies that may have been part of our endeavors. But as far as our main message going forward is also always plan that escape route. I just employ every citizen at the sound of my voice to make sure that you have an escape route in your home. Practice that plan. That's one of the ways of making sure that you have a better chance of surviving if a fire occurs. Hopefully, a fire does not occur in your homes, but if one does, it's always great to know that you have an escape route. Have a Plan A, a Plan B, and maybe even sometime a Plan C if necessary. Practice that plan. And that's what we -- that's what that this year's theme really kind of spawned on, practicing the plan. Thank you very much. Be safe.
Thank you, Fire Marshal.
We have another proclamation, and it's designating October 20th through the 26th of 2019 as Pro Bono Week.
And I would invite past President of the Saginaw County Bar, Dan Straka, to the podium. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Jamie Forbes.
Good evening, Mr. Straka.
Good evening.
City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas access to justice is a fundamental and essential right to a democratic society, however, countless citizens cannot afford the legal representation that they need to protect their lives, properties, and natural liberties. And whereas each year volunteer attorneys donate thousands of hours of pro bono time and expert knowledge to these vulnerable populations, the invaluable contributions of pro bono attorneys help to ensure and protect a just society for every -- and whereas few other professions are in a position to offer this specialized assistance, and in doing so, these volunteer attorneys substantially enhance the distribution of justice and equality throughout our community. And whereas the Saginaw Bar Association is joining with the American Bar Association to designate October 20th through 26th, 2019, as National Pro Bono Week, and to highlight the need for pro bono services during these challenging economic times. During this week, we celebrate the outstanding work of pro bono lawyers who volunteer their services throughout the year. And whereas the energy generated by the National Pro Bono Celebration is a powerful force that helps to build a just legal system that will result in equal access to justice for all. We support the efforts to ensure all people receive adequate representation and protection in the legal system regardless of their economic standing. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2019, as Pro Bono Week. In the City of Saginaw, and urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize the contributions of pro bono work in our community, we recognize this generous effort, and the pro bono lawyers who serve our communities, they also strengthen our justice system and support the rule of law. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this seventh day of October in the year of our Lord 2019. Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Millen, Jamie Forbes, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, and Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Congratulations. And if you'd like to say a few words, Mr. Straka, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor Clock. As always, I'm full of hot air, but you have to forgive me because I believe allergies plus office construction at the juvenile court do not mix. And I kind of feel a little sympathy for Councilmember Bench because I think you're having the same issue with your throat right now. Thank you so much, everyone. As most of you may know, Gideon v. Rainwright established that in a criminal case, everyone is entitled to an attorney. Fortunately, there is no civil Gideon. Those members of our society who aren't able to afford counsel either must go it alone or, if they're lucky enough, get the help of a legal aid attorney or a pro bono attorney. And that is why pro bono attorneys are so important to not only the legal process but our justice system for civil cases. And the Saginaw County Bar has always strived to help with that, and I appreciate the support of the City of Saginaw. And in fact, right at the beginning of Pro Bono Week, on October 21st, at Hoyt Library, we are having one of our pro bono events, an Ask the Lawyer. This one's a little dear to me because it's on juvenile criminal expungement. Most people don't realize that the mistakes we make from the age of 10 to the age of 17 may follow you for the rest of your life unless you get the record expunged, and that's what the clinic is all about. One of the local attorneys, Kelly Ellsworth, is doing a presentation on that, and I'll be there for the prosecutor's office to make sure he does it right. And once again, the pro bono luncheon that we have to celebrate all of our pro bono attorneys is on October 23rd at the Saginaw Club at noon. I invite you all to come. We will be having a guest speaker, a former federal magistrate from Indiana, who now lives in Saginaw, will be making a presentation. So I invite you all to come to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next order of business is public hearings.
And the purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole, and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name and your position on the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Public hearings are not a question-and-answer session. Therefore, questions must not be directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience.
Thank you. We have one hearing tonight, and it's regarding the Urban Cooperation Agreement with the City of Midland.
Well, I think we recognize the man who's up in front of us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council Manager. The Urban Cooperative Agreement that's before you tonight is a subrecipient agreement with the City of Midland. This agreement is necessary for us, the police and fire departments in the City of Saginaw, to receive Homeland Security funding. City of Midland is the fiduciary for the 2018 grant cycle, so they are requesting all entities that will receive grant funding to complete their subrecipient agreement. I get it wrong every time. Any questions?
No, we can't. No questions and answers.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments additional at this time? Any additional comments on the third and last time? Any additional comments at this time? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are now at public input.
Thank you. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the public and the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Mary McCulloch.
Mary McCulloch.
I'm so excited. I'm nervous. So I am speaking on behalf of Saginaw. My name is Mary McClich. I'm a Saginaw city resident. Do I need to give my address?
No.
Okay, Saginaw city. And I want -- how many of you all recycle here? I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but raise a hands. Cycle? Okay. I'm an avid recycler for years now. I know what happens if we -- you know, no one wants trash in their backyard, right? We go to throw something away, it's, you know, you can either throw it away, and then there it goes. The garbage man picks it up, and you don't know where it goes. Well, it goes to landfill a lot of the time, and over half of that can be used to make new, like recycled into new products. Well, we've had curb side recycling on and off here in Saginaw, thank goodness. I had to purchase it for a minute. There was a little bit of a lull where we didn't have it in the city, but now we're back to having it. We're back to having it regularly. Plastics, one through six, glass, you know, aluminum, et cetera. Every other week, they pick up recycling on your trash day. So I went out recently to -- I put out like normal, and I thought, I'm going to get the calendar to make sure I'm doing the right week. You know, we have different weeks. Went to pick that up, and I found out that we no longer recycle glass. And I was like, man, glass is the easiest thing to recycle here. You know, it's one of the easiest products. You know, you melt it down, you know, you make new glass out of it. It's pretty easy to do, but we don't take that. I realize there's probably a lot of breakage, et cetera, that may go on. And also plastics. We're only taking one and two. We used to go from one to six, okay? So we don't -- we only take one and two now. So, you know, I was just like, oh, now we're going backwards. So I did some investigating, and I called MMWA, which is Mid-Michigan Waste Authority. They're in charge of our recycling, and they said it just costs too much now. It's cheaper to put garbage into a landfill where it's going to sit for years and years and years and years, and make our ground -- that ground is not -- you can't use it. Methane gas builds up under it. It's just, you can't use it for years and years. And glass doesn't break down. I mean, it might make oil in thousands and thousands and thousands of years, maybe down the road. But for now, something that we can recycle, this is so important for these youngsters to hear too, it doesn't make any sense to me. But she said it's just costing too much, and plus, we don't have anyone to take the glass. So that was a big problem too, you know? And then here's like, bingo, why don't we have someone here to be doing this? And so I did a little more investigating. Bay County still recycles, Flint recycles, Johnnysie County recycles. And then I called, in Ann Arbor, I called a gentleman who was very -- am I already done? Good grief! Oh, I'm just beginning. I am so sorry. We can piggyback with Ann Arbor. I mean, there's options. I have so much more.
You can come back. You can come back next, in two weeks.
Okay. I would love to. I'm so sorry. Boy. Okay. Thank you for hearing me out. Thank you so much. Thank you for hearing me out.
Yes, if you have materials, you can give them to our clerk.
Okay. Yeah, I have a couple names. I've got a letter, and, you know, just, I've got a lot of names and numbers, so I would give that to you. Can I -- do I need to?
You can do it now or another time.
I got information with some names on here, and I'm going to -- should we sign up?
Yes, you would need to sign up again.
Sign back up.
Yep.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker is Michael Valmer.
Mr. Valmer.
Let's go to Matthew Weidman. I don't see him either. Saleem Manan.
Mr. Manan.
Thank you for the welcome, Honorable Mayor, and City Councilmembers. I'm here today to appeal to our moral leaders, and the focus is moral integrity. I want to share something with you, and I wasn't going to do this first, but I'll do it now. And that is that in America, 300,000 Americans have died since 2000 from opioid overdose. 300,000. If a foreign country had did that, we'd be at war. Where's our compassion? Where's our concern? We're issuing the police systems to bring people back to life after using drugs, and sometimes they say they have brought the same person back three times from using drugs. And now, we're going to legalize marijuana to add to this. And I just ask, where is our moral integrity? Where is our caring? Do you know the deleterious effect that this has on the children, on infants, marijuana? And do you know that right now, they're going to put it in chocolate? They're going to put it in candy? They're putting it in cookies? Now, who you think that's for? Now, if they can get the children involved, then that ensures them that they can continue to make profit at those people, even your next generation, off of this stuff. And for you to go down in history as leaders, right here, approving that, how would the history books write you after we've gone through all this and seen the suffering? I don't need the medical records to tell me the effect. I've lived it. I see it every day, what this stuff does to people and families. I see it. I don't need the doctors to tell me that children cognitive ability is harmed and hurt, families are broke up and ruined because they're on drugs. I've seen strong, handsome men destroyed just on marijuana, smoking it every day. In this great city, I hate to see you guys recorded as being members of this group that allowed them to come to Saginaw and sell this stuff and expose our children. I'm standing here to let them know that there's somebody here standing up for them, and to let them know that these people want to come after you and make a profit at your waste and your hurt and your harm, and make you addicted. Now, we have members who have been on opioids and drugs who have suffered, and we're going to stand around here and approve it? They won't lead us in Michigan if the leadership don't come from you, and that's why I'm here. You have to lead. You have to take the vote. Our leadership is corrupt. They're corrupt. How do I know they're corrupt?
Time is up. Thank you.
I'll be back next week, I guess.
Two weeks. Two weeks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adam Gack.
Good to see everybody again. It is the fall semester, which means that I am back to introduce my fantastic group of interns who are here with me today. So from left to right, I guess, guys, stand up, but don't shake the table too much. We've got Jonathan Dent, Dylan Bickle, and Grant Schluckbeer. They've arranged themselves by height. They've coordinated their clothes. I didn't tell them to do this. They are here, they are ready to help me do some news, so if you see them, if you see them looking a little confused, keep it on the level, but help them out. If there's any problems, you'll have my card, reach out to me. They may not be able to answer questions that I can, but I know that you guys did a great job helping Michael along. We're so happy for Michael Pavarski, who is now the editor-in-chief at the collegiate. So he is no longer my intern, but I hope to have him as employee someday or something. But yes, my interns, Adam Gack, let me know if you need anything.
Thank you, Mr. Gack. Welcome to the interns.
Our next order of business is the remarks of council.
All right. The -- I want to remind everyone that we have a three-minute time limit, and today we begin with Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clock. I just wanted to recognize one of our speakers, Ms. McCulloch. Thank you for coming back through whatever source of error you weren't able to speak to us at our last meeting, and I like your perseverance to return. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I wanted to start, and I'm not going to belabor it because all of us practically were there. I attended the Michigan Municipal League's Fall Convention in Detroit the last week of September, and I just want to say we received a lot of very good information, and it was a wonderful networking opportunity with other local officials from the entire state. I know I did, and I think some of our other council members helped put Uptown Bay City over the top for the top award for community excellence in development project. So that's been in the news recently. I'm sure you've seen that. Upon returning home from that, it was right into fire ops with the Saginaw Fire Department on Monday, the 30th of September. I wanted to specifically thank Fire Chief Van Lou, Battalion Chief Willoughby, Lieutenants Foreman and Peddinger, and then all the firefighters who made it a success. This was my third time to take fire ops, and they were busy over the past year thinking of new training evolutions to put me through each year. So I will see you guys next year. I'm sure you'll have something else new. I wanted to mention Police Chief Ruth. Saginaw Police Department sends out a newsletter each month, and in their October newsletter, they reminded us October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I wanted to quote two statistics from his newsletter. We always find out how many calls for service we have in a month. During September, it was about 4,100. And of those calls for service, 369 were listed as domestic violence calls. If we could cut the domestic violence calls in half, we would cut almost 5% out of the calls for service for our police department. And that would allow them to focus on some of the things that people think we don't have enough time for, quality-of-life things that make our neighborhoods just more inviting to live in. So I think this is well timed to look at this because we have a lot of resources to address domestic violence in Saginaw. The city funds some of them, church groups fund them, other organizations do, so I think this is an area that with some effort, it can yield good for everyone. So I'd like to see the focus this month carried through that the chief has suggested. And those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you to our speakers for coming out today. We thoroughly enjoy hearing from our public and our citizens, so appreciate everything that you're bringing forward.
What if somebody signed up and sent an email and didn't get called? And I took time off?
I'm sorry, but I have to tell you, you're out of order. You'll have to check with the clerk afterward.
Apologize, sir.
Thank you.
I also, it's also been a busy two weeks, but first and foremost, I want to say congratulations to Friday. Again, I was not able to be at the conference, but I saw the videos. So congratulations to you. Also, Councilwoman Bench, happy birthday, belated birthday. And then also to Councilman Bill Ostache, congratulations on your reunion. It was a wonderful event. I too was at the fire ops, and it was awesome. I didn't get to get, I only could come for a little bit, but I did operate the aerial ladder, so I think I'm officially certified as the new aerial ladder. Come on.
That whole thing, girl.
It's all right. I truly look forward to the fireworks tomorrow. I plan on attending. And to the Fire Marshal, thank you for bringing the attention and safety, there you are, to our citizens on how to make sure they have a route, a plan to get out and be safe. So to all of the Fire Department, thank you for all that you're doing. Just want to remind the community that Women of Colors is currently taking applications for their coat giveaway, so if you are in need of a winter coat, please contact Evelyn McGovern at Women of Colors and get signed up for the coat giveaway because it's going to get cold really fast. And that is all I have.
Very good. We'd like to have Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all our public speakers. Congratulations to, and he's gone, to our attorneys for all the support they give, and also to the Fire Department. I missed the fire ops. I missed the spaghetti. I apologize, but I still want my shirt. Yes, I still want it. The last two weeks have been busy. I'd like to thank all of the citizens of Saginaw for all their support, love letters, emails, texts congratulating me, but the work has just started. I have yet to sit down and relax like I should, but it's okay. I'm on a mission. I got one year to make a difference. And in one year, I plan to make a difference for the City of Saginaw. And in one year, I plan to make a difference for the city of Saginaw. So, I'd like to thank all the citizens for all of the help and support that they give, that you give me. On October the 23rd, Great Giant Supermarket at 3216 Sheridan Avenue is doing a trunk-or-treat. So, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will be handing out candy. Anyone that wants to volunteer their trunk and some candy, please come out and help us. The name of the group is Community Coming Together. It is going to be important that we pull together now, more so than ever. On Tuesday, the 29th of October, Great Lakes Bay Health Center is having an annual luncheon. This is their fourth luncheon. It's a fundraiser. I still need three people to come sit at the table with me. And they keep there up here waving. But I need three more of them up here. I need three citizens that want to come. Lunch is free. It's on us. So that you can understand what they are doing in the community. If you've never been to any of the facilities, you're missing a treat. Please come and come out and support. And I'd like to also thank all of my councilpeople who came with me a couple of weeks ago. I hope that they had just as much fun, or more fun, I should say more fun than I had. I was in meetings. They got a chance to see Detroit and enjoy Detroit. And to my friends at Spicer's, I hate that I missed hanging out with the Spicer Group, but it's okay. It's okay. Next year, I'll be able to go out with the Spicer Group. But with that, thank you all so much for your support. And thank you, troop master.
All right. Next, it would normally be Councilmember Bench, but I thought she needed, pardon? She wanted to pass, so we will move on to Councilmember Ryan.
That's what happened. We had a good time at the MML Conference, but what they didn't tell you is that a couple of us came back sick from that. So, with all the germs, probably because we rode together. But anyhow, it's been, it's been a good couple of weeks. I did take some time for myself. One thing I noticed that if you don't take a little time for yourself, nature will automatically do that for you. So, I spent the last couple of weeks with an upper respiratory infection. Nonetheless, I still got a chance to get some questions answered from the manager and from the clerk as it related to rental fees and things like that. So, work is still being done. So, thank you, guys. MML was great. Brenda did a fantastic job. Was proud to be there with you. I remember we started going, and you were just going before you were the Vice President or President. So, so proud of you. Glad that you can represent Saginaw on a statewide stage. It was a little bit late tonight because we had a meeting with the lead, Latino Leaders for Advocacy and Development, and they brought in State School Board Member Lupe Ramos Montegui. And the conversation tonight was all about the Third Grade Reading Law. And that's coming into place, and we've really gotta get some things together in our community. So, I like to look at it from a wraparound approach, because it has to do with us. The students in our community can't read. That's a problem. So, whatever we can do, whatever I can do to assist, I'm definitely gonna do that. I want to give shout out to our UAW brothers and sisters who are out there still on the picket line in their fight for fair contracts. I want to lend my full support and still think that we need to look at doing something in the matter of a proclamation or a resolution. Also, via Facebook, I got the chance to see some of my neighbors and friends with the Citizens Police Academy. And I've seen Rick. I know many of you guys know Rick. Rick took a taser just to see how it would feel. And I was like, oh, my gosh, Rick, don't do it. So, I watched the video, and then here it goes. It's like, ah. But he's a good sport, and he definitely gives us a lot of help in the community, not just on some of my special projects like Beautification Day, but Spring Into Service, and many other things in the community. So, hope he's doing well from his tasing. Did want to talk, did want to talk a little bit about, what's the next thing I have here? Oh, I want to say thank you to Rachel Josaska and Vicky Davis for getting me some items together. I was part of a group at Michigan State University. It's called MPLP, Michigan Political Leadership. And we have a group of them coming next Friday to Bay City. And it's just nice to give people some stuff. You know, we have people that are coming from all around the state of Michigan. It is just so good. We've always had pins and things like that, but to actually have some good quality material and to be able to give that stuff out, so people really get to see what our community is about. I really think that's about it. I will be at the trunk-or-treats. We have a lot of events that are coming up, including arson watch. I plan to be there on those nights. It's always fun.
Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to our speakers and our guests tonight. Ms. Mary, I'm also a big fan of recycling. My dad actually started our recycling program in my little town when I was a kid. So, it's just in my DNA. I'm looking forward to hearing more about your research when you come in two weeks. Like many of my colleagues, I was happy to attend the MML Detroit Conference last week. It was exciting to see our Mayor Protem installed as president, but I also learned a ton. Things that caught my interest most were the work of the Detroit Front Conservancy, incredible organization, quite a model that we could bring some of their learnings here. A panel on food trucks, which actually really surprised me, and the installation of electric vehicle charging stations. Bay City has these. I would love to see that be something that we pursue here in Saginaw. I had the opportunity to attend fire ops last week and got to try some wimpy versions of actual firefighter tasks. And wow, do I appreciate them extra after going through that. They put their lives at risk every single day, and while we ask for them to be more efficient, we need to make sure that they have the tools to do the job safely. So, I also appreciate their incredible hospitality and their service to our community. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Grassers.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for missing the last council meeting. I was sick myself and have been recovering for the last two weeks. So, hopefully, my voice will hang out here for a couple of minutes. One thing I want to mention, too, I did not make it to MML for, I had some other obligations, including... Congratulations to Mayor Protem. I was, I did see the videos myself again, and sorry I missed it. So, next year. Another thing I did want to just make a comment on, Mary, thanks for bringing up the recycling. I, too, am a big advocate, and there has been, I actually got into a conversation with someone, and they were wondering what happened to the program, as you did as well. And all the municipalities are going through the same thing. So, on our website, if anybody would like to visit, there is some more information right on the main page. But it talks about some of the challenges and things that we're going through with, I guess, dirty recycling units, and they're having to put more people on staff. And you're shaking your head. You know exactly what I'm talking about. But that's for our citizens that are also questioning themselves, because I did have that conversation in the public. Something else that is coming up, it sounds like it's gonna be kind of fun, kind of a family event. The Saginaw Children's Zoo is gonna be having their own zoo booth. And that's gonna be starting this Saturday on, actually, it's Saturday, the 12th, and will be running through the weekend of the 27th. Cost is $5. This includes the carousel rides. And I don't know if anybody's been to the Saginaw Zoo, but that carousel is very unique. It's all hand painted, and it has a lot of the scenes of Saginaw history, so that is very cool. Train rides, juggling show, Dr. Slime is gonna be there, is what I'm told. So, that's an interesting presentation. And then it's gonna be decorated out, and then, of course, all the zoo and everything will be open to animals and stuff. Last thing I want to say is I, too, had the opportunity to go to fire ops for the first time. Thank you, Chief, for putting that on, and everybody that was there. I was a little nervous, but Eileen assured me that I would be okay, and she started me with my boots first. But it really was an interesting event, because you never really get to experience something unless you're in the shoes of that person that actually does that job. I know some of the things that we did that day was just a small portion of what our firefighters do, but I went home with, I have a lot of respect for our police force and our Fire Department, but I went home that day with a totally different perspective, and I was exhausted. So, thank you again, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rollins.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, citizens. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the city council meeting, and thank you for showing up. And I'd like to especially thank the people who made comments this evening. Brother Salim, I'd like to thank you for your comments, too. You're very well spoken. And I understand the significance that alcohol and drugs do have in our community. You know, and it's shameful that we had these situations that do happen in our schools and stuff like that. A lot of people don't realize it, but if you do the research, you'll find out that a lot of kids who have substance abuse issues in their family, they're the ones that suffer the most when they come to elementary and junior high and high school. So, it's something to be thinking about when we think about this issue about marijuana in our community. I, too, had the opportunity to go to the conference in Detroit, and it was a beautiful conference. And I must admit, I've been to Detroit a lot of times growing up. You know, every five, 10 years, I had the opportunity to go to Detroit. And it used to be I was kind of scared about going downtown Detroit. I honestly was. Scared of the unknown, just like people probably scared of the unknown when they come to the city of Saginaw. They had a lot of vacant buildings that was not occupied in the city of Detroit. And now, just about all of them are either getting refurnished or bought up, and the city is just thriving, and it's really good to see that. I had the opportunity to go on a walking tour and a bus tour of the city of Flint, I mean Detroit. And it was magnificent to see the things that were going on there. And the more I looked and rode around, the more I was stealing ideas for the city of Saginaw. They got a area where they, it used to be a train that came down, smacked down through Detroit and go all the way to Tootie River. And now, that's a running area where people can walk and run and ride their bikers and stuff like that. And that nature is just beautiful. Seeing how they took some of the old mansions and turned them to dress shops and other different buildings and stuff like that is magnificent. Some of the dress shops in the evening, and in the daytime, and then sometime they turn them into banquet facilities in the evening. There's a lot of good ideas that we can use here in the city of Saginaw if we get people to invest their money here. So, I was thinking, maybe we ought to have a bus tour to take future investors and just our youth, young people around the city of Saginaw to show what we have, so that maybe they can think about investing some money in the city of Saginaw. That's what I got out of that conference. And most definitely got out of the fact that the president of the organization of our own, Brenda Moore, a person that I've been knowing for the last 55 years. Adolescents, I've been knowing her. You guys may not know this, but Brenda used to even be a lifeguard at the Holden Ground Swimming Pool. And she's a good lifeguard, too. So, thank you, Brenda, for all you do for the city of Saginaw, and we're looking forward to you to bring back some resources to our city. And the going, uh-uh. Next time, I guess.
Thank you. I think everyone up here has had a chance. I won't have to cover much, because everyone's covered mostly what we need to cover. I do want to say thanks to our scouts for being here today. We have, as I said earlier, two separate troops, and they are here to get their communication badge. Part of what they need to do is attend a governmental activity. And today, I hope they will get a good introduction to what government at the local level is all about. Many times, you hear the phrase, "All politics are local," but there's a lot of truth to that. So, guys and girls, when you watch what is happening up here, you're seeing what is happening at the very basic level of a city. If you were to go to another community or township, you'd do the same thing. You'd see what's happening at the basic level of a township. Here, this is the city of Saginaw, so you're seeing how the city of Saginaw is run by its council. We're made up of nine members who run the city by the way of policy. Our manager runs the city by way of administration. And if you have questions afterwards, I'd be happy to try and answer. I'm sure everyone here would be willing to do so as well. If you'd like some photographs, we can do that afterwards as well. One of the other good things, in addition to having scouts come to our meetings, is, one of the good things about being a mayor is not only hearing from our adult citizens, but hearing from our younger citizens. And I'm gonna pass around, I've already had a chance to show to a couple of our council members, but I received a letter dated Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Dear Mayor Clock, in close, you'll find letters that my second-grade students wrote to you as part of our unit on government. They wrote about, they wrote you about concerns they have for the community of Saginaw. Thank you and have a great day. Signed by Heidi Laillman, Francis Ray Academy. And there's 27 notes from her second-grade students that I hope everyone here will take a chance to look at. So, I know Council, yeah, this way. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Moore has seen it, Councilmember Scherzer has seen it, but I'd pass it on to all the other council members. It really is sobering to see what is a concern to some of the kids of our community. And it's also good that, to know that they are being taught about government. I hope they will be in the future, coming to our council meetings, they can learn something. And as far as everything else, I think that's been covered, so I am done.
Great. Mayor, that takes us to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and a few people mentioned it, but reminder that the Fire Department Annual Awards Ceremony tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. The council members are invited to come up to the front, as usual, if you're attending. And thank you to Fire Marshal Martin for attending tonight to accept the proclamation. And I'm sure he'll say a few words tomorrow as well. But the fire prevention program that the Fire Department has started, I think, is a big key in the reduction of number of fires in the city. So, you'll have an opportunity to see some of the equipment, Fire Department tomorrow, and the public is welcome to attend that as well. The Neighborhood Action, Neighborhood Association Action Group meeting is next Tuesday, October 15th, at noon. Council chambers here. And we did receive some invitations, so hopefully, you all saw them. If not, it was kind of a, they did put it together rather quickly, but Ascension St. Mary's is having a groundbreaking tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. At 800 South Washington in front of the main hall near the Emergency Department for the new expanded emergency care center. I believe the mayor is going to be the city representative there for the ceremonial shovel. But everyone is welcome to attend that. I sent you an email last week. In the budget adjustment, there is noted a Tuscola Alley project. We did talk about that. It's been quite a few years, though. It was when we initially started working with Delta College, and we were talking about walkability downtown. Also was part of our Place Plans Project that we did with N-N-L. So, I think we have an opportunity there to link Washington Avenue with Delta College and some of the other developments back there with an alley improvement. And we have been working with some local groups. TSSF Architects helped with the drawing that I sent you, so I think that'll be a good project. You've probably noticed that it has been torn out most of the summer. That's a consumers' project. And we did try to coordinate that, but it doesn't look like it will work out, given the timeline that they're working on. And I want to make sure that the businesses right there can have their customers get in. But we'll continue to work on that. Hopefully, we could move on the project this fall, but more likely will be in spring, but we would get that done this fiscal year. I know some council members have sent emails about the "This is Saginaw, We Build" campaign, and how do you get the logo. And any requests that you receive, have them contact the city manager's office, and Vicky Davis can assist with that, with those kind of requests. We do continue also to get requests for the video, our parts of the video that was put together for that program. I think they did a great job on that. And we do have a team here at the city that's continuing to work on that. And I think we will produce additional videos within the next year. We'll probably produce at least two a year. So, I think that's, I plan to have them work with the same group that did put that together as well. So, we'll continue that. I was contacted by the executive director for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and they have, if you know their building that they have on Fordney Street, there are some issues with that building. So, we're trying to work through that with them. The building is on city property. It's an agreement similar to what we did across the street, where it was built by the organization a number of years ago. I think there are some things there that maybe they've, they no longer need a building that size. They're trying to do their work out in the community. So, they don't need a lot of office space. You're trying to do work out there and do things for kids. So, I have another meeting set up with them. So, we're trying to figure out how we can potentially help them move to another site or improve their building. So, we'll see what direction that they want to go in with that. And I think council members did a good job of addressing recycling issues. And as the speaker said, we do get, we don't make the rules for that. We get them from the Waste Authority, as she mentioned. Phil is, Phil Carwood is on the board, but it is all an issue of where they can market the glass and some of those plastics at this time. So, there's not as much of a market for that, but... for that. But I know that the authority and the board will be working on some ways to attempt to control costs, and perhaps we can try to work with some of the other communities in our region that are not part of the Waste Authority, that potentially that could help as well. And we do have a presentation this evening that Ms. Jones and Ms. Miller are going to give you an update on the Saginaw Soup Project. So, ask Yolanda and Cassie to come up to the podium.
Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager, Mayor Ellis. We're here to talk to you about the Saginaw Soup. I'm gonna go over a brief history with you. Back in 2015, the city of Saginaw, Saginaw Economic Development Corporation and Saginaw Future launched our grassroots economic development effort, also known as Saginaw Soup. I like to deem it as like a shark tank, but friendlier, and so, we're back. This event allowed for existing and potential entrepreneurs to pitch their ideas to a panel of volunteers and the community. This also gave these entrepreneurs the ability to win some seed monies for their businesses. The real purpose of Saginaw Soup was to promote economic gardening or homegrown economic development here in the city. Outside of receiving cash prizes for the winners, each of the Saginaw, at each of the Saginaw Soup events, we also receive access to free, to low-cost business assistance provided by local business experts. They're also provided with the ability to participate in a business mentorship program through Saginaw Future and Saginaw Economic Development Corporation. We had three events that was held during 2015, one in April, June, and October. All the three events were well-attended, and it was very competitive. The competition was fierce. The first winners was B&amp;J Coolbands, and they made handmade bracelets, necklaces, and keychains. They are currently still working, operating their own business. And that occurred in April. The second winner was Yumi Paint Experience, which allows the ability of individuals to have a realistic artistic skill level to paint a piece of pottery or paint picture to help be assisted with, by an instructor. She is currently located at 316 South Hamilton. And finally, the third winner was K3 Denim, and that was in October, and she made custom-made clothing using denim and other materials. She's currently helping individuals one by one with sewing through her decorating and sewing business. Okay, so you're probably wondering at this point in time, what happened? Why did we stop? Well, there was a turnover and staffing that prohibited us from moving forward. However, we're back. So, Cassie's gonna come and speak to you about our 2019 event.
So, fast forward to 2019. I started at Saginaw Future in 2017, and so I guess after a couple of years, you know, new staff, we need to bring back Saginaw Soup. So, what we're looking at is somewhat similar to the event that we had before, but we've brought in a lot more group members. So, we're working with CMU RC, which is now located at the SVRC Marketplace. We're working with the SBDC, that is with Delta College. We're working with SVSU, Blue Water Angels, SEDC still in the city of Saginaw, and then Saginaw Future, and the Chamber of Commerce. So, we have a wide group of different organizations that work with businesses and have some touch in the entrepreneurship in Saginaw. And so, we're really looking with Delta College downtown and with the Marketplace and CMU RC, we're having that bump of entrepreneurial spirit anyways, so we thought it was a perfect time to bring this type of event back. So, right now, we're in our stage for our very first event, which is planned for February 12th. We are, we pushed that pretty far back so that we can have a longer period. Once people apply, in between that period, they, so our application, sorry to go back, our application is due November 1st, but that, but the event isn't until February 12th, like I said. We're having that large gap so that we can work with our applicants. They'll be going through CMU RC, have total access to everything CMU RC offers. That includes multiple chances for them to pitch. They have Mondays where any, anybody can come in and pitch their ideas and get help from all of their different people that come in that assist businesses with funding, business planning, account services, things like that, to really push them forward. And so, once we get to the event, they will have a really ironed-out plan, so that their businesses are viable. We are hoping that we get a pretty wide amount of people who apply, so that we can narrow it down to the very best. We do also want to eventually move this into a regional competition, because Bay City right now does their own competition, and Mount Pleasant does as well. We're hoping Midland starts theirs, and then eventually, our winners from each community can then compete against each other. So, this is just the beginning, but we're hoping, just like back in 2015, to have this be more than once a year, at least twice a year. We've talked about quarterly. Having it in February hopefully will allow us to do it quarterly, but we'll see kind of once we do that. And the February 12th event will be at CMU RC. It's from 4:30 till 6:30, and we'll be pushing out more information. We do have a Facebook page, Saginaw Soup, so follow that, and the DDA's page, I constantly share it as well. So, thank you all so much for having us. Oh. Did you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, "This is Saginaw, We Build Opportunity."
"This is Saginaw, We Build Opportunity."
Any comments, sir? Yeah, any questions or comments?
I did want to mention, when we was in Detroit, we had the opportunity to visit some businesses that got started. The mayor has an initiative where he helped businesses out in the city of Detroit, too, and we happened to go to one, and one was a cupcake coffee shop. And the young lady got a lot of money to start that business, and she's doing real well. Clinton came to town and ordered thousands of dollars in cupcakes, and she's on the national map, was selling her cupcakes. And I think this is a really good thing for the community. I've been following you guys on your Facebook page, here, taking a look at this. And we need, we really need something like this in the city of Saginaw, to help young entrepreneurs get started in the city of Saginaw. So, thank you so much for what you guys are doing.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Anybody? All right. Oh, yes. Mayor Protem?
I'd like to thank you guys, 'cause I took your stuff to the conference, and more people want pens and Saginaw building, and they was like all excited, so we got kudos from almost all the other eighteen people that sit on the board with me. They was like, "Oh, we need to give a job." So, I just wanted to tell you, great job.
Anybody else?
I got a, I got a couple of questions.
I guess, it's a real quick comment, too. This was exciting for me to hear this, 'cause this sounds like some of the new startup business stuff that I've been hearing, too, people are talking about. And then, I also, I don't know if people know, but we also have a lot of information on our website, at the city website, on businesses and how to get started, and where's your resources, and just, so, but thank you again. This is a great program, it's a great presentation.
Councilmember Balls?
I got a question for the city manager. Have you noticed the impact of the strike on the city of Saginaw yet? I know we used to have twenty to thirty thousand GM employees in the city of Saginaw at one while, and I, I don't know if you were the city manager then, so you know how much funds come in. I know for a fact that we lost a lot of money when the plant closed on Genesee Street, you know, and I know that the UAW has really helped out financially with the city of Saginaw, and I'd just like to know what's the effects right now. I personally, I just got laid off last week, and I work at Nextyear because of the strike there. We make parts for a lot of different places, Nissan, General Motors, Ford, Chrysler. We make steering columns for everybody. But have you noticed the impact in the city of Saginaw yet?
Not that I know of. So, right now, there are, I think, at the GM plant here, somewhere around two-hundred-and-forty employees. So, that number is down a lot from, you know, from the peak of what it was, thousands of employees. So, over time, you've seen that huge decrease in income taxes, but thankfully, we have had some other industries come in, and right now, right now, for the city, and I believe the county, the largest employer is Covenant Healthcare. I know it's the largest employer in the city, and I believe St. Mary's and the VA Hospital are both in the top five as well, so that makes up our major employers. But we'll, you know, we look at income tax on a monthly basis, so that would probably be where we would, would see it. So, we'll update you if we see a significant impact on that. But we do, I will say that Mayor Protem Moore did ask us a question about paying bills in the city. She asked specifically about water bills, if people are having, you know, if people are on strike or laid off or something like that. But it's, if that's the case, we look at everything on a case-by-case basis. So, anyone that's having issues like that should contact the Water Department and talk to them about payment arrangements in those cases. So, I would go back to their presentation and thank Yolanda and Cassie for putting that together. They work, that group actually works on a lot of different projects. Cassie and Yolanda are kind of the core there, and they also work with Tom, but that group, along with some other members, are also part of our marketing team with Vicky, especially in that group. So, we're taking a couple of Saginaw Future employees and city employees that really that's not their area of focus, and they're doing a lot of work, like putting together these types of programs, like Saginaw Soup and the marketing program and the video, so really have expanded their roles in the city. So, appreciate the work that they're doing with that. The SEDC, I think it's important for everyone to know that that, that division within the city has been working with small businesses for years, so they've helped a lot of really good small businesses get started and get loans, from small manufacturing to Fralias to a number of other groups that they've helped. It's maybe not as public as Saginaw Soup, but it's a great resource for businesses in the city. So, any, anytime you see anybody that's looking for funds for small businesses, please refer them to SEDC and Saginaw, because they give out a lot of loans and they have money available. I think, hopefully, we'll see Cassie coming back, because I also want her to do a presentation on what the DDA is doing as well. Ever since, we did make that change, if you recall, a few years ago, the DDA contracted with Saginaw Future to be the DDA administrator, and also, a few years ago, council and the DDA worked to approve that two-mil levy in the district. So, now they have funds and they are doing a lot of projects. So, I think, I think we need to kind of do a scorecard to send out to the businesses and people who live in the district, and also present it to council, so the public can have an update and knew as well, because they're really doing a lot of projects and supporting a lot of activities in the district now, so now we need to, for that. So, with that, that concludes the management update.
All right. Were there any questions or comments for the manager?
Yes. Mr. Manager, could you explain to the audience and the council members here, the project that's going on in Tuscola, and if MML had any funds that went into that project?
The alley project?
Yes, sir.
We're not receiving funds from the MML, and really, it's an opportunity, I think, to spend a limited amount of funds to improve the walkability. Really, where we look at that with the MML, it's that place plans initiative that they did help us with, which that project was funded to a large degree by the MML through a grant, and also MEDC helped with that. We didn't put very many city funds into that project, so they, they helped with the ideas, but this is something that we're, we're going to expend some funds for. The budget adjustment is eighty-five thousand. I think that's a little bit more than what our estimate is on the work, so it has, it has that built in. But this is something that, when we get our audit presentation in, towards the end of the year, probably January, you'll see, I think, that we are, once again, improving our financial position and our fund balances where we, and when you get to that point, you can start to expend funds like this on projects to help improve the business climate, make it more attractive downtown to help draw on those businesses. And that's what you'll see if you were going around in Detroit. A lot of that done, was done by nonprofit groups, but Detroit's obviously much bigger than us, and they have more foundations. But I think if the city can put some of those limited funds, like this type of project, and make it, make it have a sense of place, I think that's a good opportunity for us.
Anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV, Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk at this time?
Number six, please.
Number six, okay. Are there any other exceptions to be noted by the clerk at this time? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for, to approve the consent agenda, except for item six.
It's moved.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to.
We'll, we'll, we'll come back on number six. Is any discussion on the remaining items in consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Item number six is approve the fiscal year 2019 Strategies for Policing Innovation Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs and Bureau of Justice Assistance for $646,706 for a three-year period for the police department. That was Councilmember Balls.
Yes. It's good to see that the Department of Justice sent us some money back to the city of Saginaw, 'cause that is our tax money, too. But I'd like to know, is this only policing for, after the crime? Or are we putting any money up front, so we don't see the crime?
We'd like to do both. We're looking at both of those aspects during this. That grant is for technology over a three-year period, and we'll, we'll be looking for technology to be used before and after, and afterwards in the form of cameras.
All right. I'm just saying, it's all right to fight crime, but sometime we need to fight the criminal before he becomes a criminal.
That's the best way to do it.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else, Councilman Balls?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you, is there a motion on number six?
Yes, it is. I'd like to make a motion, we approve number six.
It's second.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on item number six? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Next order, Businesses' Boards Commissioning Committee Reports.
All right. The, I'm gonna catch up here. Are there any reports from, for any city boards or commissions?
So, I serve on the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation Board, and since we're talking about Saginaw Soup, I think it would be a great time to bring up that there is a business plan writing workshop on October 24th. It's gonna be held right here in the council chambers from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. So, if any of those businesses are interested in setting, getting their pitch, it's a great opportunity for you to get your business plan going, so just wanted to remind the public.
Any other boards or commissions, any reports at all? All right. Next, Madam Clerk.
Your next order of business is appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk on the two proposed appointments? Hearing none, we, is there a motion to approve the two appointments?
It's moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
Next, we have ordinance introductions. Our first one is to add sections 116.041 through 116.045 of Chapter 116, Telecommunications of Title XI Business Regulations.
Is there a motion to introduce?
It's moved. Support.
Is, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. It will be laid over under the charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Second ordinance is to add sections 153.041 through 116.045 of Chapter 116, Telecommunications of Title XI Business Regulations. usage.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
This also will be laid over under the charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Next, we have resolutions. We have one tonight. It's approving the two thousand eighteen Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement and Addendum.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Next, we have resolutions. We have one tonight. It's approving the two thousand eighteen Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement and Addendum.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
This also will be laid over under the charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Next, we have resolutions. We have one tonight. It's approving the two thousand eighteen Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement and Addendum.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moving to support your discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Thank you.